I'm going to move over to Wharton. And we're looking to take a look at a little area that I've highlighted between precincts one and two. Don't think anybody lives within these precincts that would be affected. And by the way, that's one of the things I would assume that you all would want to do is not pair anybody together. But if you look at this area that's highlighted in red here, and I can zoom into areas and features to let you all look even more closely. But basically highway sixty to the west, if you will, east-west boundary. And a little bit that those census blocks there and these census blocks that are here, and we have to go by census blocks. As far as moving district lines are concerned, and sometimes they're really irregularly sized. Fortunately, these are these are mostly blocks that tend to match things. But if we were to make this change, for example, bring my any changes little box out here and take a look at it. Just back up to the top. I'm sorry.
Where are you at in America there? Did that work?
Yes, that's Wharton. I apologize. I thought I was clear on that, but that's Wharton.
Leaving south on sixty?
This is sixty running through here. And this is fifty-nine over here.
Okay, so Hungerford is somewhere in that picture. Sixty-four.
And this is one oh-two, one oh-two here that's red. It's one oh-two, and this is sixty that's on this line running right here. And this is where precincts one and two currently currently meet. And the red area that I've selected is just an example, and I don't want to overstep myself here. But if you were to make that change, you would bring this back up top again. He keeps doing that to me. You would change seven hundred and six people, in which case precinct two would be almost perfectly numbered with just a deviation of eight. The precinct eight would be fairly close at being just hundred and forty-four shy. But one point three nine percent, which is which is really pretty good. And I would encourage you, whatever whatever decisions you make, and if we can work out something that you all can agree on today, it would be really easy next week just to go ahead and formalize it. Depending upon public input and everything else. But that would make the equalization between these two pretty simple. And then you could go to El Campo and do something similar over there and equalize three and four.
Right, there's a small gap between precinct three and it's white. Yeah, you're headed south right there. What is that?
That is that is the current narrow little boundary that's that. Let me bring my
gerrymandering the heck out of it, aren't you?
Well, actually, I'm not. I'm actually less gerrymandering it by by filling in these blanks into two than are what were already there in your your current lines. Let me bring this down a little bit. Might help a little.
So this is one oh-two coming into Cannon Jack in the block. Okay.
See, right now, it's just this narrow block that connects this area of two with this area of two.
What is the white area?
The white area is two.
So this two you have downtown and out there? And this is Alabama Road, probably? I didn't know you had all that. Interesting. Okay.
So it would it would it would bring a little bit more continuity, if you will, or direct square lines to do that. And that would be something, again, that would have minimal impact on county roads. Y'all are the ones making the decisions on on all of that, and we can we can do other things if we if you so desire.
Have you already looked this all over in your office?
I'm sorry, sir. Have I already?
Is it your office? Because you're picking some good area.
Yeah, I looked at it a little bit this morning, just just to kind of get some some preliminary thoughts of what you could do. But any any place between one and two, you could make any adjustments that you wanted to make. So let me let me back out a bit. So you can look at some of the other areas. I mean, you could have other parts of Wharton here. You're not going to have a lot of population up there, but that's another area you could do it. And let me bring down a little bit more. You could also make some modifications in here. Again, I don't believe there's a lot of population within those, which could.
Frank, does that make the boundary then sixty or we call it Richmond Road?
Yes. Yes, sir, that that would make your boundary sixty, which, you know, it's always kind of nice to have a a line that's that's somewhat of a known quantity for purposes, especially for JP's and the constables too, but
Frank, is that when you head on you hook a ride and head toward Bay City on sixty, what is that? Downtown?
Downtown through here.
Go down the red you're adding. What road is that?
Right in here?
Yeah.
Okay, let me bring in zoom on in.
Yeah, that's what we will call that bottom there.
A little more. So this is Mylum Street that's the current boundary.
And the next one's Caney?
Yes, Caney is this one.
Then keep going up. What's the next one up that you're adding in?
Davis. That would be Davis. Looks like Alabama, if I'm reading that correctly, but I can bring it up a little better.
Oh, street, okay. And is that the one that runs by the cemetery? Okay. Okay, that kind of makes sense. Does anybody here see a problem there? It's two blocks behind the quarter. And it's
There's a cemetery.
Oh, behind us, yeah. We're one of the white blocks right now. Frank, that looks good right now. And when you go over to Richmond Road or sixty, that's that's the boundary because it it looks like it, right?
Now, another option might be, and I haven't looked at it, if we if we took this part out and you just someone were to take in all of this, but wasn't sure. That might be a similar equivalent sort of a change if you'd rather have your lines a little less gerrymandered as they are right now.
That line you just drew looks pretty good. It looks pretty square.
Yeah, I was just saying you could do away with this this stuff down here if you wanted to. But but if you just made the change that I suggested here, it certainly squares things up better.
Okay, we have a question, Frank. Hang on a second.
Yes, sir.
Looking at how they come in precinct two. Transportation to East Bernard and servicing them. You know, the reason they filed the truancy from Morton High School in precinct one is because they want to drive to East Bernard. And so Jared has to pay all of my truancies because the folks won't go to East Bernard. And if we could get something, you know, to ease their pain, you know, to get make it easier for them to travel, get truancy fiction, you know. That's that's what our issue is with all the apartments that we're going to be receiving. It just seems a little distant at a pace for them. And and put some burden on them in the traffic.
And I was and I'm arguing, I think the problem, we have to gather seven hundred to a thousand people. Yeah. And not in your area, where I live now, with you, there's we ain't gonna grab seven hundred people.
The one where the gathering is off this road. All sectioning housing, which is the problem.
Like, well, where else are we gonna grab seven hundred people? That's a heavily populated area. I hear you, but I don't know, because you're already in that area.
And I can tell you from certain papers, that's the problem. They're more upset about having the boundaries than they are.
I just don't know where else you can grab seven hundred people between one and two. Sure, that's I can hear what you're saying.
I'm in the city, you know, there's no population.
Frank, you were gonna you were offering to pull out some more land in that little what did you do there? Would that do any good or?
What are you talking about down here?
Yeah, you were doing something when we all started talking.
No, no, that's fine. I was just I was just saying if you wanted to square things up a little bit more here and have a little less gerrymandered lines, I mean, people are already living under them. I'm sure it's fine. But if you wanted to, I could probably see what you got that's that where sixty would remain your boundary line here at least. And let me let me look and just see how many people we have if y'all would like for me to. Not real sure how this one works, but it doesn't have anyone in it, so that's probably all right. But here's not to be. Maybe put that in four. That's why, sorry, my number's off. All right. Well, I just undid everything I did there. Sorry about that. I'd have it right.
Speaking of Trump, I was watching, but I couldn't talk. And I couldn't take it. It was
Not long.
I heard you start talking. That's why I had to go over here. So we'll finish what you were saying because I didn't hear it all. You were that upset. I heard you say something about the north. Switches.
Transportation for the people that are going to be having eviction files going to East Bernard rather than going on Miles.
If we remove this small group of people from one to four, that would move three hundred and twelve people. And would square this up a little bit.
So the red is what you're adding?
Yeah, that would be added to four.
Oh, it'd be added to four?
Yeah, which you could do right there. Or I could or I can. Because right now it's Four is short. If if we made this one little change here, that would bring four down to pretty close to being exactly where it needs to be without needing to look anywhere else.
So is four under or over right now today?
Four is under right now.
Oh, okay, it's under three seventeen, okay.
Yes, sir.
So if you add that into four, the dark red, then fours is close to ten three ninety-three, give or take?
Correct.
Okay.
It'd be with it'd be within sixty of that.
What and then what does that do to to?
Yeah, it'll it'll lower it a bit, but I'm thinking perhaps we could take in the rest of this. Let let me just let me just
Okay.
Let me just make this change and see what that does.
I don't see y'all. Y'all don't have a problem no matter what, because half of Wharton has to be increasing too.
The only population is in Wharton.
Yeah. So they're gonna have to drive.
I'm just going out.
Yeah.
Okay, now I'm gonna Now, if I go back and I try to regroup these into two.
No, he changed the white before, but now he's putting that in two. We're on the north side of the South Side. Because the courthouse is currently in four. The courthouse downtown is in four. Wharton's got the population. Five oh-seven, five oh-seven. Five oh-seven. One is over five sixty-three. Four is under three seventeen. Three seventeen. And then two is under five six nine eight. Five oh-seven.
Yes.
Hey, I'm not sure I can hear y'all, but can y'all hear me? Sound seems to have gone away. I think y'all are muted. Arlene, if you can hear me, I think the court's microphones are muted.
Frank, I hear music. That's what I was trying to figure out where it's coming from.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's why you're trying to end all that. Gotcha.
Can you hear us now, Frank?
I can, yes, thank you. If we if we made those two changes where we put this stuff over here into four, and we just widen that out to where you're following. I guess that's Alabama Street that's there. And then sixty on this side. You are now within the the magic number of ten percent. If you wanted to stop with that, should be about seven point eight percent or something like that. But you could still make additional adjustments if you wanted to elsewhere, like perhaps in El Campo, if you wanted to lower lower precinct three down just a bit.
He's got a we got a question.
Yes. Yeah, and and if you my my suggestion, and it's only a suggestion, is you might look at El Campo with precinct three.
Did you hear that? If you if you add, oh, if you move three to four, then four's gonna be over.
Yeah, let's go look. Maybe it's maybe it's two. Let's go. And four could be over a little bit. And honestly, I mean, right now you are legally balanced, if you will. So if you wanted to take any little bit of El Campo and put it from three to four, you could do so and still be in balance, or you may leave things exactly as they are.
Well, let's play just a little bit, try to balance it out, so maybe in ten years we don't have to do it again.
You have any suggested blocks? We've got one here that seems not to follow along five twenty-five. Or maybe we do everything above six sixty-three. That's several hundred people. That may be too much, but we can look.
We have to worry about minority populations?
You 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 not really, because you you currently do not have a minority-majority district. If you wanted to try to create one, we could we could do that, but I'm not sure we want to try to focus on race in in any way or matter. But but if there's some desire to do that, then certainly we can do that. Do you want me to take a look at this area here, or would you let rather me focus on the blocks in the city or?
In the city, that area is is well populated, and it's pretty well defined by the roads it's on. I don't think I would touch the city part.
Okay. This doesn't have very many people in it, but you could you could stop that that we're in that little finger that's if you wanted to. But only four people there. And those three, if you wanted to move those from three to four, just square up the lines a little bit.
Yeah, you know.
Anybody want to do that?
What what it requires is is just posting one notice, or will we have to have hearings the more?
No, you just 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 one notice, one hearing, and and that's it.
I guess you can pull that out. I don't think anybody lives there. I don't think you're gonna achieve much, but you're making the map look better.
Yeah, so that's that's totally up to you all. If you'd rather not move it, we don't have to.
Pull it out. I commission again, the roads are real bad there.
So you want me to go ahead and move them from three to four?
Sure.
Okay. I'm still looking at the same about the area I was looking at.
There you are.
Okay. That's different than what I was looking at. Scroll down. Almost just I went somewhere else, but I know I'm in El Campo.
Oh, you're in the right box.
But that that area is that's 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 a couple of hundred votes, but it
It's that green like heel, like a shoe heel right below that white area you're on.
It's this. That's it. Okay, I'm sorry. I got myself backwards there. Another little piece right there if I can get it.
How many votes were in there? Two?
There are four people. I don't know if there are two votes, but
That's a mad family.
Curious about this. Railroad that's through there. That's the city limits, I suppose. That's also zero people, but that would clean that up a little bit if we're cleaning. Okay. So all I've done is made the map look a little prettier. That is an elected official residence, at least it once was, so we probably want to leave that block alone.
Where at? There's not one there.
Right here.
Oh, that's where oh, yeah, that's where you want to leave that one. He probably wants to stay there. What if you go north down your map?
Sure.
Yeah, right where you're at.
You could pick up those small little ones that are in there and a few small little ones in here if you wanted to. You like me to do that?
Much population.
Yeah, there's fourteen in that block, twenty and twenty and twenty-three, and it's like about another eighty or ninety or hundred or so over here.
Gonna grab that, but it's fine.
Oh, I'm I'm sorry. I'm I'm going backwards again. I apologize. I think I should go in from I should be going from three to four, so. You could take this area. Twenty-seven sixty-six. Road is tiny. I can't see if I can make our street names a little bigger.
Yeah. Frank, there's a there's like a rectangle that that has, I think, a number of people in that's kind of to the middle of your screen.
Okay.
Go up right there. Oh, you're almost there. Now to your left.
This one right here?
Yes, that should have some people in it.
Yeah, this got about forty-five people in it. You like making that change?
How many was that?
Forty-five. Forty-five.
Okay. Are you are you able to see where three is without leaving us? I mean, is he's he's still over what? 400?
Yeah, let's just see what we got here. Three is still over 400, but you know, you're 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 narrowing the gap. You're still at below 7% now with the with the deviation. We can move a few more if you care to or.
Okay, okay, Frank, go go to your right. Yeah, that big old chunk right there you're on that make that rectangle.
Okay.
Is that Wilbur or what? Elwood, yeah.
Elwood Street.
Yeah, that there's yes, there you go.
That is at 72 people. And so you're now below 3% for precinct two to be.
That's probably.
I'm sorry, we're already there. 3.7% for three and.
That's Elwood. But it's right in the middle. That that's on Main Roads. Picked up 370 something.
What about this little notch right up here?
That's not gonna be any light there, is it?
Probably not.
Yeah, notch it. See what happens? Just to make it square.
I'll take care of it already.
It's 54 people.
Yeah, that you probably aren't doing that good. We ought to be close now.
You're very you're you're pretty close. Two is still under, you know, it's 2.93 under and three is 3.18 over, but uh, so you're at five point.
Okay, we missed it, Frank. What is where's three at? Where is three over now?
Three is over by 331 people or it's 3.18%. And and two is under by 304 for 2.93%, but you're within the, you know, you're within the bounds of where you.
What did you do? Four's gotta be over pretty big now.
Yeah, four is slightly over at 1.1% over uh, by 115 over.
115. Can we go back to Wharton now?
Sure.
Where you were at and and play it and is there a way to? What's one over? How big is one over now?
One one is under.
One is under?
Yeah.
One was over by a lot. One was the problem.
Yeah, and we we moved a little of it over before, remember down here?
But now it's under?
Just just a hair.
What's it under? How many?
Uh, one is under by 144 votes.
Is there a way to is there a way to clean up two and four a little bit?
Yeah, and let me let me also suggest moving this a little bit here.
Yeah, give that to one.
Give that to one. That'll get you closer.
How many people live in that grid?
Ninety-seven. Now that brings one to to within 47.
One is 47 over?
Forty-seven under.
Oh, under?
Yeah.
And then where's two?
Two is 304 under.
Okay. And three?
Three is 331 over.
Four?
Four is 18 over.
Eighteen. Too bad there's not a way to give someone three to two if you have to go out and
You could you could move a little more into four and then add some of four over here back into two if you wanted to. I don't know that you need, you know, again, you're 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 within the legal bounds where you don't have to do anything more, but.
What's the deviation between one and and was not one anymore? Now it's three and?
Now it's now it's two and three, so it's uh 6.8 or so.
Would you want to you guys want to mess with moving taking more of three to get it for and then four getting into two? No, no, it's all perfect right now, but I don't see why you want to move. The one that's over now is three, but like Doug said, doesn't touch me. Okay. It Frank?
Yes, sir.
We we would like to move some more of three into four and then go back to the Wharton area and put some of four into two.
Okay. We can do that.
Looks like we need to grab about 200 people in three. What what if guys if up by the speedy stock somewhere right there, he runs a straight line out?
What if we what if we take this area that's outside the city limits here? From three and put it into four.
It's a good natural boundary, those two streets. What if you came down in the city and and you you came down to, I don't know, the streets, but go to the middle of your map with your with your uh, and find the street that carries out to Wilbur. That doesn't make any sense to you, but where you at there now?
This is this is this is this is 71 through here, and this is 650, 663.
Right somewhere right there. Start making a straight line out.
Out that way?
Yeah, like clean up that and make it a straight line. Find the street and run it out.
Okay, I I'm gonna start with 663 because you're already there's like 300, 400. Oh, there's way too many people in that.
Okay, but but we like the outer boundaries you have.
Yeah, now, let me show you, and unfortunately, we got to go by census tracts and it gets weird.
Yeah, like that. Not, don't do that one. Don't do that big one.
Okay.
Go go back to your words. Grab him. Grab some more green gas. What does that do right there?
That's 103.
Go ahead and grab that next square up. The green, go right up. You got a green that there. No, 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 no. Not there. Come come below it, below it. There, one more. What in one there? What does that do?
That's 205.
Man, that looks pretty good.
And let me look at this one little piece here since we're doing it. That's 216. That way that street, you don't have to zigzag off a church street. It turns it it turns into Olivia. That look good? Yeah, that's already that's already in four right here.
So if you do that, what does it do to what does it do to three then? What numbers he at?
Now, let's see what we do here. So three is down to 115 over.
He's 115?
Yep.
Oh, that's good right there. Keep that. See how it's such a good straight line?
Oh, wait a minute. What did I do there? I'm sorry. Let me let me let me we do something here. I have the wrong precinct on her.
What is this right here? That's straight up there.
Okay, let me tell you where we are now. Three's at 115. Yeah, uh, four is at 234 over. Two is still 304 over, so but yeah, one minute. Sorry. Zoom in a little bit.
Yeah, he's trying to figure out what street it is. Olivia.
That's Olivia, and I think this may be. Yeah, that's Church Street there.
So that's in the cities. With with that now again, three is where? Population wise?
Three is 115 over.
Okay, that's good.
Which is pretty good. And 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 four is 234.
Okay, let's go back to Wharton.
Question for you before I go back. This little nodule here, would you want to put it back into three? That's like about 100 people? 150, just to square that off?
Then you're gonna put him back to two over.
Yeah. Is that all right?
Yeah, do it. Yeah, that makes sense. Makes it cleaner.
That's 140. See what our numbers look like now. So four is at 94 over, three is at 255 over.
Okay, we need to do some more work then.
On three?
A lot more than 94 over. We want to go back to work. Is it?
Do we want to add more to four to so we have more to move over?
You'd like to take another 100 out of three and give it to four. But you've got good lines.
Yeah, let's let's look up the line here and see what else we got.
How many people live in that um yellow loop there on the bottom?
This this one here?
Go there.
That one? Let's see.
That's it.
160 161 there and 108 there.
How many?
161 and 108.
The 161 would help you. Where's the 161 at the top?
Yeah, but unfortunately, I mean, it's in it's in four now.
Oh, oh, yeah, I know. We're trying to take people from you though and get the Go back up. Yes, go go back up where you you just took. Yeah, he took that section out. It's a straight line.
Want to go back? Go north?
You took a section out up there that had 74 people in it. He's just trying to confirm you took it out.
Yeah. We did. There was a little notch there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gone, but let's go up and just be sure. I think it was around it here. But I couldn't tell you for sure.
Okay, so what what you can do is go back to Church Street like Tom said and just carve up another street. But I don't think there's a street that goes out except for Olivia, is there? I want to give him at least 100 more of yours so that he can give 100. He has 100 to give. You're you're right now about 230 something over, which isn't bad. But if Doug was trying to, if we're trying to clean up Wharton more and try to get Doug out more out of Wharton, we've got to give, you're gonna have to give them more on that too.
About some of this down here. Oops. Where did I go? Oh, no, someone's messing with my computer. Let me take a call here. Hey, Loretta, this is Frank. I'm in the middle of a Zoom call using my office computer and someone's in there shutting it down. Although it's kind of late, but I can I can as long as you reboot me, I can go back. I just hope I didn't lose anything. Okay. Yeah, I'm on a Zoom call and we were drawing lines. No, no, just yeah, they just need a call first. I mean, I don't mind. No, no, just, yeah, they just need to call first, I mean, I don't mind normally if I'm just doing it, so. No, yeah, I mean, could have saved them, anyway, I just, we're good. I do. I don't think it's gonna take her long, but I, I don't know. I don't know. Oh, she went back up. Yeah, count one for me too, but we're okay. It's okay, we'll, we'll make it, do I need to, what, do I need to wait, or? Okay. Well, I think I know what happened, but I, I think she probably did the same file, I was, but I didn't have it open, I don't think.
That's what I was saying, just go up and grab one more block and see what that's. It would be wonderful if you could go and grab cars. Now, now would be the next thing I would say, is go up and take another one. It's pretty good though, the way it's squared it up. Yeah. You've got to get his, you can't, you've got to try to get his. He's right now, he's at about two bits. It already, it already, oh, yeah, you've got to give these ones. I think we're close.
I'm nearly with you. All right, fortunately, all I lost was my formatting, and we kept our numbers, so I, I think we, we left off kind of where we were before.
Okay, you ready to go on?
Yeah, I see one little thing here, we may have made this change before, Judge, but. This little notch right here, that's in three.
Right.
Could go to four.
Well, no, I think what we want to do is go, go into town, into the middle of town, there's where the green and the yellow meet. Go more to your, more to your right, more to your right, the other way, right where they meet, almost there. Now go up to the corner, go up north, no, 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 right where they, that corner, come down a little bit, Frank, right there, there's a street we want to take out.
Right in here?
Go down to the bottom. Down to the bottom of the green box.
Bottom of the green box down here?
Wanted, we want to take another row of streets out, so we want to go where the, that, right there where the, where it's a ninety-degree angle. Of the, of the yellow and the red, there's a ninety-degree angle, yellow and green part.
Okay. This right here.
That street right now is, is Church, we want to go right where your arrow is, we want to grab the next block, which is Coral or Correl.
Oh, okay, hold on.
And we're gonna run it out to, to. It's Wharton Road.
Oh, I'm sorry, defaulted to voting districts. All right. Maybe not that one, but this is what you're talking.
Out to the next road, which is, one more, right there, what does that do?
That is a hundred and thirty-one people.
I think that's gonna be as good as we can be.
Okay, make that change.
And that's what we thought. So what is three now?
Three is a hundred twenty-four over.
Okay, and what is four?
Four is two twenty-five over.
Go. Where's the chump, I, Thomas, right, the chump down, right there, yeah, what is that, pick that little chunk at the bottom there, yeah, what is that?
This, this little bit here? That's a weird one, but. Take. Take that out, that's, that's twenty, this other census block that kind of.
What's in that one?
There's another twenty-one in that one. Let me zoom in a little bit, maybe you get a sense of what, what it is we're looking at.
That, that's not gonna help us.
That's forty-one people, it's up to you.
The only thing Frank, you could do there is that first, first little block you had.
That one there?
Yeah, and that was how much?
Twenty.
Is that y'all guys, or? What, what, what is the next block over that's in four, it's wide, the very next one beside it? Like give it back to three, that one, what is that?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's twenty-three in it.
There's a street there or something?
Avenue First or Avenue I? And then this, and this is Alvin behind it, and this is Heights.
Yeah, give that street back to, to four, three, to three, not the one you're on, but the next one over.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, give that back to clean that up.
All right.
So now he's, three's over what?
Three's over by a hundred and forty-seven, four is over by two oh two.
A hundred and twenty-seven or forty-seven?
One, one forty-seven.
Okay, do one more thing, go back where we just came from, when you got your computer working again.
Okay, that corner?
Yeah, in, in town. And what if you go up one more block, and this will be a lot of people, and you go up to, why don't I know what this is called, Norris, no, go back up. Right there, go on up, yeah, and grab one more row of block where you were, no, no, no.
Right here, right there, yeah.
What if you grab that one about?
That's Norris Street there on the left, that's a hundred and sixteen.
Ooh, that's gonna be sweet, what does that do?
Do one sixteen. Four is over by three eighteen, and three is over by thirty-one.
Hey, we like that, right? Okay, so, so let's play with three, that's what we care about now, so three's over by what?
Thirty-one.
And four is over by?
Three eighteen.
Three eighteen, now let's go to Wharton.
Okay.
Norris. Norris, make sure that corner runs through the school.
You don't want to work on this little area here?
We like to give some, get four out of there, some of.
Yeah, and, and it could go to two.
Yes, because two's behind right now.
Or it could even go to one, but let's just.
We'd rather close the gap in on that long white strip.
That's four hundred and twenty-eight.
Oh, that puts him way under, Doug.
Well, if, if you move that, four is only going to be a hundred and ten under, which is one point two or something, and two's only going to be one twenty-four over. That'd be pretty close. And if two's slightly over, if you wanted to end this here, this is about a hundred. People, you could move to one, and just have a, have a right edge there.
We have right now, as far as four, that looks good.
I'll put that into four.
Yes. Yeah, he could get out of four, he could get out of four, yeah. Okay, and so now, what happens, can you give that big old block to one?
This one here, yes.
How is it that block?
That is zero in that one.
Sold!
That, that put them all very close. One would be sixty-one over, and two would be sixteen over.
Okay, you've taken that block out, that red, the big red one?
I will, if you, if you're ready, that will do that, yeah.
And get out. Okay.
Now you got a deviation, a total deviation of less than two percent, across everything.
We missed, say it again, and then we're gonna ask you some questions, so tell us again from the top, one is now what?
Total deviation is less than one and a half percent, so it's one point.
How many?
It's a little over one and a half, yeah.
How many?
One point, one point six five percent.
How about the number of people?
Four is the smallest with a hundred and ten over, one is the largest with sixty-one over.
Okay, so Frank, I missed you a little bit, so one is sixty-one plus.
Right. Four is, two is sixteen over.
Three?
It's thirty-one over.
Four?
One ten under. That's really pretty good.
That's pretty good, okay. They're asking a question, can you go down and tell us, is there a street there in Wharton that separates the yellow and the red? That's, is there a street that separates four in yellow and two in red? Is it Elm Street?
It must be a creek or something, there's a. County Road two twenty-eighth that's here, but then it curves off. Then it becomes Regional Medical Drive down here. One oh two. But there's not a, but there's not a road, that's a. But there's not a, but there's not a road, that's a, I'm not sure what that is, is there a creek or river that runs through there? Colorado River, yeah, it's the, of course, it's the river.
They're, they're trying to see where, where they all meet, right there.
Right there, let me zoom in for you.
Blocks and switch over sixty people.
I could probably stop it right there on, uh, East Avenue. See what we got in there.
Two is sixteen over. Three is thirty-one over, four is one-ten and under.
You are, you are as close as you can possibly get, but you, we can make some other tinkers. If we did, if we, if we did this, four would be just twenty-five over. If I move that red square from two to four.
Right.
And then, and then two would be a hundred and nineteen under. Is two more likely to grow than four?
That's not really gonna do anything. There's no way to get dug, you're gonna be on the inside of the river, there's no way. I, I think we're pretty good where we're at. Don't, don't do that.
Don't do that, Frank, okay.
What's in that square right there that you're looking at, yeah, what is in that? That rectangle?
Looks like eleven. Wanna move it over?
Not the drive, but it would make sense to get rid of the. Is it?
No, that precinct two right now. Yeah, he could clean up that one edge or that one dip edge.
You wanna go ahead and move that to two?
Oh, she's talking about that little cutout, I'm, I'm just talking about putting all that in one, don't you? Go to the top of the map a little higher, are you trying to use some crap? Oh, never mind. Is that a road right there? Yeah, right there, is that a road?
County Road two-twenty-five?
Okay, what, what's on that strip?
Twenty-five.
Go ahead and shift that over. So that, that flipped twenty-five?
Yeah, that flipped twenty-five, so.
And that's.
So, one is thirty-six over, two is forty-one over, three is thirty-one over, and four is one-ten under.
Say it again, Frank?
Thirty-six for one, forty-one for two, thirty-one for three, then a hundred and ten under for four.
You've now got the largest precinct. You want some of the red in the bottom? Trying to give me a long, long picture.
And when I wanna move this notch here, or is it okay?
How's it in that notch?
Eleven.
That'll, that'll fifty-two, that's just gonna make two bigger.
It'll make two bigger, one slightly smaller, but two's, I mean, two's right on the nose at forty-one.
Is that? Is that a straight road right there?
Looks like a county road that goes all the way through.
Go ahead and give him that notch.
Boone Bend Road, County Road one-twenty-five.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that'll be a pin, clean map though. Now you're gonna be like twenty-five over. Where's your, you think from five eighty over to twenty-five?
So one is twenty-five over, two is fifty-two over, three is thirty-one over, and four is one-ten below.
Fifty-two, thirty-one, negative one-ten.
Deviation percentage of one point five-one percent, which is really great.
Can you back out, yeah, he wants to see the whole map now.
Sure.
I think we did. He's crying, Frank, he wants it a little bigger.
Yeah, we'll get this in the middle. What you have is a much cleaner map, and it's very tight.
They're, they're discussing, discussing, but it looks pretty good. What's the next step, Frank?
Uh, the next step is to, to post your public hearing. And, um, I would encourage you to do that sometime next week, and I'd have break my calendar out here in a second, but, um, my next week is horribly booked, but if you all are confident that you're not going to need me to change things much, I can you know, I, I'd still probably be good if I were on the call, but, um.
But we want you on the call.
Yeah. Let me, let me grab my calendar, but I would, you know, if, if Friday is my best day probably, Thursday is great, but I know that's a holiday, so that's, that's totally up to you, I certainly don't mind, but y'all might, and your staff might, so hold on a second.
Frank, we wanna play one more time on the map.
Okay, that's fine, let me bring it back up. Where do we wanna go?
I wanna go into precinct one to the far north, um, of it. So it's the blue there, right, somewhere's right about there, you can, there's a subdivision called Lobo out there, it's got some people in it. It's way at the top. Tell him where to go. Right there, that whole section, is there way to? Target, start at the top of the blue, where it meets the, the red or pink, whatever color that is in. It heads toward the right. Is it two twenty-five? Go down, if you can see road two twenty-five, everything north of it.
Right there.
That, you were there. It's, it's a parallel, yeah.
That's all one uh, tract, and it's a hundred and eleven people.
Okay, is that what you want, please? Because that's a voting, is the way it bids later that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, no, it's census block.
The census block?
Yep.
Okay, that covers one? Go back, one more road down up there, grab another road for it, right there.
Gotta, gotta have that in there. That's two hundred and thirty-two.
Okay, now let's, let's go back to town now. Oh, what about that square right there, that rectangle that's red in the middle of that blue, yeah?
Wanna find out how many's in it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clear this other one out for a minute. Seventy-five.
Okay, so, so do all of that, so now, now, one is.
You want me to go, okay, you want me to go ahead and move that to, to, to one? Move it all to one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There you go. We will, we will, so where are you at?
And do you want me to, you want me to go ahead and do this, or or just keep that in reserve for a moment?
Okay, we'll keep it in reserve, but we're probably gonna do it.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and mark it if y'all are pretty sure, I mean.
We're pretty sure. What, what does that do to one now?
All right, let me put it in there, and that one, one is, uh, a hundred and thirty-two under at this point.
A hundred and thirty-two, what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and where is, uh, two?
Two is two hundred and nine over, that are still well within your deviation, so.
And we wanna give some, well, guys, kind of done that, well, we should give those three down here. Two is under?
Two is over. Two is over by two oh-nine.
Oh, hang on, hang on, just let me write. What is, one is under a hundred and thirty-two?
Right.
That's what I did there. Okay, so now we wanna go to town and, and take about a hundred or so of the two and give it to one.
Okay.
Right, okay, that, that rectangle down there at the bottom. Right in town.
This one here?
Down there, that's where they wanna give away some land.
All right.
I wish you could give that entire red block, but like, no you can't.
Well, I'll keep track of how many I've got. As we go, let's square this off. That's a hundred and thirty-five.
That's right there, that's gonna put it.
That's three hundred and fifty-nine.
What, what does that do to the numbers?
Uh, if we do three fifty-nine, that would put one over by two twenty-seven. And two under by one fifty.
Uh, gotta go back.
I can take a little of it out. That's two thirty-six, which would put one over by one oh-four, and two hundred by twenty-seven. But again, you wanna do that?
Is there a way to grab another twenty somewhere, or what's the next little rectangle of, that, right?
Unfortunately. No, that's a lot, that.
Next over.
That's forty.
No. No.
But, so, so with that, two would be under by sixty-seven, and one would be over by one forty-four.
No, 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 go, give that back, give that back. And then come back and give the next one over back. There, give those two back. Top the other. And that, yeah, straight, right there, you're doing it, what does that do?
Okay, that's, that's a hundred and thirty-five people, uh, that puts one over by three people. And two over by seventy-four people. That's a pretty close grouping right there.
Okay, that's good.
Make it happen.
Yeah. I think we're there now, if you can, for the last time, give us all the numbers again.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, all right. So one is over by three. Two is over by seventy-four. Three is over by thirty-one. And four is under by one-ten.
That's a bigger gap than where we were. What's the differential now?
One, one point seven, seven percent. One, one, one of the best deviations I've seen thus far.
Do one more thing, right there in town, follow the, go blow that up a little bit, there was one more place that looked out of the pocket, just to the top of the screen, I can't see it right now. Right there, what, what is? Those are apartments?
Yeah, it's four, four hundred and eighty people right there.
To the left. It seems like a Florida high school. No, 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 keep going up, keep going up, that one, what is that?
That's gonna be a little over a hundred for this.
Well, that'll, that'll throw, that'll throw Richard a hundred and three and he won't get twenty-six. Those two that are between right here.
A hundred and thirty-eight people. Right now, one would, if you did that, one would be over by one forty-one, and two would be under by sixty-four.
That's too many, dude.
Still doable.
That, that would put one where? One-oh-six?
One-thirty-eight over.
And what would it do to two?
I'm, I'm sorry, question. One-forty-one overs, pardon me, one-forty-one over, and two would be sixty-four under.
Yeah, no, right now, we're all, we're all good.
But there's nothing wrong with that change, and it squares that lineup, so it's up to you.
So, guys, this is what he has. Frank, you need to hear me. This is what I have. Don't, don't do that red you got. Take that, burn that. Frank, you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
And don't do that.
Okay.
Okay, so right now, in one, you're a plus-three. Two, you're seventy-four over. Three's thirty-one over, and four is one-ten under. The only way they help Doug out, or give Doug more is to give back the city of Oregon, but he doesn't want that.
You know where you were messing with streets down at the bottom? You can't score at that corner and give back one more street down at the bottom when he was originally messing with? You have a straight line there.
Where?
What, when he was first messing with it? We, we give one more.
I don't think he wants any more back anymore. I, I think we're there. I think that's the, um, what do you think?
Doug, where's the, where's that from here? I don't know.
I mean, the old phone number, you're still in.
I think so.
Where do you want it to go?
John, you're on a stick.
The red and yellow is right here. Frank, can, can we look at a close-up of where the yellow and the red meet and work, and then all three are right there?
Right there, sure.
Distinguish what street that is.
Where did my stuff go?
What is that street? That's the dividing line right there where you're at.
This one?
Both of them. That, and the one below.
That's, that's East Avenue, and that's Elm.
Elm and East.
Then Alabama up there. And that's, you can see it, there's a cemetery.
Raise the map, like, make us go down into the yellow. We want to go down and see. So, we, yeah, right there, we want to see the boundary right there, there.
That's the river.
And that street there is what?
Alabama. Yeah, twelve-ninety-nine also.
Does anyone live in that block where your arrows at, Frank?
Uh, give me one second, I'll tell you. This block here has, there's, there's a block, but there's six, and there's thirty-six. Here, let me see what we got by blocks. Let me, uh, just tap them. Census says there's forty-two in there. Mostly up here.
How many people's in that block right there?
Forty-two.
Don't, don't do it.
Okay.
Okay, are we good? Okay, Frank, we're good. What's next?
All right, so we need to, need to set up meeting date. And necessarily want to share you my calendar, but, um, Friday, and I know I've got something else in between there, although I'm still waiting. Friday is, is, is my better opportunity. Wednesday late might work as well. The, we always try to advise everyone, the, the counties, to publish a notice in the paper with at least three days in advance of your hearing, but we're running out of time for that. Um, so, unfortunately, but if you, if you can meet that goal as well, that'd be ideal.
So, we, Joyce, would we be able, I know you're leaving, but we'd be able to get Saturday's paper? We can still get Saturday's paper.
Okay, good.
So, Wednesday the tenth, like, it, uh, can we do two o'clock?
Let me, I think we can. Let me, let me see if I can bring up my schedule elsewhere. I can look at it here. Probably a little, uh, we can.
Two-thirty?
Two-thirty, or two-thirty should do it.
Right? Can y'all do two-thirty next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yes, Frank, two-thirty on Wednesday the tenth.
Okay, great.
Now, what we need from you is, can you send whatever wording we need to post?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I will send that, and I will also send the, uh, the order. And I assume you're gonna want to move your JP precincts.
Yeah.
To measure it with this, right?
Right.
Okay.
And then you'll send that to Joyce?
I shall.
And then do we get the map? So, we, the map has to go in the paper.
Ideally, yeah, I'll send you an image file of that, too, so you can get that in.
Will you be able to do that this afternoon, Frank? Because, uh, Joyce is leaving me.
Yes. I will. It may be close to five before you get it, but I, I will get it to you.
She's all right. Uh, all right. So then, you're doing things, but we need to pass this order for redistricting that's before me, correct?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, should we go ahead and do that right now while you're doing whatever you're doing?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, can you describe, tell us what it is?
Well, yeah, based, I mean, in a nutshell, all it is, it says that you will engage in, uh, the redistricting of the precincts, you know, in accordance with generally accepted redistricting principles, taking into account Section Two and, uh, of the Voting Rights Act and the Constitution. Um, and that your line drawings will be done in public, which they have been, and obviously, the, the adoption next week will be as well. So, that's, that's pretty much it. Just finding a need to redistrict and saying we're moving forward.
I said, I have an order for redistricting of political boundaries in front of me. Is there a motion to approve it? Commissioner Gage, second by, Commissioner Zahn, Gage makes the motion, Zahn seconds it. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, that carries five to zero. Okay, Frank, we passed that, and each of us has to sign this.
Yes, sir.
We have a hearing set for next, um, Wednesday at two-thirty to ten. You're gonna send Joyce the wording for the notification in the paper. It'll go on Saturday's paper, and the map that she's gonna put in the paper. She's also going towards all the, the court. If you guys want one, get with Joyce, and she'll be happy to see you one. Anything else, Frank?
No, sir, I think that's it. Thank you all very much. It's been a pleasure working with you.
So, Frank, we're gonna get you on the line again next week, but.
Yes.
Done on next Wednesday, correct?
Correct.
We'll hold the hearing and our meeting, and then right after that, if there's no problem, we'll vote, voted in.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there anything, any problems, Joyce, or anybody with the little voting districts within each precinct? Has that been something we mess with here?
Yeah, we're gonna have, we will have to redraw probably the, uh, the lines ultimately, but that will be a separate step.
Okay.
And we're not, and we're not as much under the gun for that. We just need to make that happen by the end of the year. Sooner than that, sooner than that will be obviously what we're gonna want to do.
Did you hear what I said, did you? Frank, you hear me?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, say again.
Well, dear Allison, you're worth every penny.
All right, thank you. I shall.
Frank.
Thank you all very much.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Zahn, second by, great, great, Zahn, great, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, carries five to zero, adjourned at four-oh-one. Four-oh-one P M. Two-thirty.